This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, we call the meeting to order at 6 o'clock PM. My name is Tony Arklevich and I will be chairing this proceeding. I will take a moment to explain how the zoning board of appeals function. The board is comprised of all members of the city. We have been appointed citizens of the city of Kingston. We perform the service to the best of our ability on a basis. The other people.
Something's wrong with somebody's video.
That's it.
Yeah.
People silence their microphones. They're getting a lot of feedback until they need to speak.
If everybody could silence their microphone, put themselves on mute. Good.
Okay. All right, so the other board members this evening are Mary Newbauer, Brian Cafferty, and Ari Goldstein. We got Dan Gartenstein. You in, you want to hear us, Dan? Dan?
I'm here.
Okay, good. So we've got, we've got our quorum. This will be a virtual meeting. It is the second time using this technology, so please bear with me. Eric Kitchen, zoning enforcement officer, will be in the controls and will speak to us about a few procedural matters. There will be a period for public comment this evening. I don't know if anyone else in the public is on after each variance request has been presented. This is an opportunity for individuals to make a statement of opinion, not engage in debate. Mr. Kitchen will inform you how you are to proceed with that. When I ask for public comment, state your name and address for the record. Be brief and to the point and address the board as a whole, not individual members or other audience members. Okay, the first matter before us is to approve the minutes for the February 13, 2020 meeting. Eric informs me that these minutes are very lengthy, probably 100 and some pages because we had an appeal before us that evening and we had a transcriber. So there is a transcript that's on the city website if anyone would like to see it. But for the record, we just need to approve the minutes. So if I have a motion to approve and then we turn the mics on, we have a motion and then vote for approval. I have a motion. Somebody turn your, two people turn your mics on.
Motion to approve.
Okay, Ari, second.
Second.
Brian, thank you. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Mary, you went out on the camera there. Okay, you are all in favor?
Here we go, got it, aye. Sorry.
That's all right, 4-0. Okay, this evening we have a very light agenda. But it was actually a very complex, this first matter. So I'm going to have you, this is a little strange, but this is something I experienced. Let it never be said that you don't experience something new in zoning if you're, even if you're around 10 years. So I'm going to ask you to ignore the agenda for applicant Scott Dutton and Richard Baronio. Ignore the description Eric had written there because this particular request got a bit complicated and as a credit to Scott and Eric, they discussed it and worked this out. And it's something brand new, as I said, that I hadn't ever come across in 10 years. So at this point, I'm going to introduce, I see Richard, the property owner, Baronio is on and Scott Dutton is on. And we're talking about the property on 7 Burnett Street, Zone R1, Ward 9, SBL 56.057-02-13. What I'm speaking of is a very peculiar type of area variance request in that it involves a corner lot. Mr. Baronio's property is on a corner. And if you go to the lot in bulk, chart for R1, it's very cut and dry in terms of the setbacks for the front side and rear, except for a corner lot. And by some idiosyncrasy of whoever wrote the code, corner lots are deemed to have two front and two side with no rear yards. Okay, two front and two side with no rear yards. One side shall not be less than 25 feet. The other side shall not be less than 15 feet. Those are in the footnotes of the zoning code. Now, already, Eric, do you have anything you need to add for anybody that wants to call in or anything, any procedural?
I have nothing to add. You've already spoken to, you've already read the code.
Okay, no, I'm talking about this endeavor we're going through with the virtual meeting. Is there anything you need to add?
Tony, I think you said, oh, everybody just keep yourselves muted until your ex to call on.
Okay, great. Now, I do want to put it to the record, there is a letter submitted to us from a Tom Pfeffer, who owns the historic firehouse next door. And he is in complete agreement with the setbacks. He informed us and has no objection. For those of you with good memories, Scott was before us several months ago for this same property. But in further discussion, was decided, a conversation between the property owner and Scott, that they would put the garage into the rear of the house. That would eliminate that whole issue that we had to discuss regarding the distance from that garage to the firehouse. There was a large tree in the back that will come down. But the, there is a drawing that Scott submitted and Eric sent to everyone that shows the dimensions of the garage and the location. And it is a totally new location. So Scott, everyone should have gotten a memo or an email that Scott sent to Eric and myself with specifically outlining, outlays the setbacks that he's requiring and the number of feet of the requirement and the distance. And as you can see from his email, there are two side yards and a front yard, which is consistent with those footnotes in the lot in bulk. They have two front and two sides. So Scott, is there anything you want to add? I mean, was I pretty accurate on everything we talked about?
You were, but I would like to thank you, Tony, and Eric for giving us the attention that you have over the last couple of weeks. The error in the description was mine. Since we were recycling this application, I overlooked that. You and Eric caught that, were very, very helpful over the last week, and I appreciate that.
Well, I think in your email you indicated, this is the one, one of the trickiest ones that I've ever done, and I will echo that and I'm sure Eric will echo it too. But now, you've gotten it early in your career, Eric, so now you can recognize it anytime it comes to you. But I've never dealt with this corner lot verbiage in the zoning code. So we have Scott's email. I'm assuming everybody has seen that. And if you have any questions for Mr. Baronio or Mr. Scott Dutton, we can open it up now for discussion. Mary, do you have anything for either party?
Yeah.
You got the, you have the email, you see that this is every, okay. Brian, anything? Brian? Turn your mic on, Brian. Your mic has got to get on, you're muted.
Bottom, middle?
Yeah, where the icon is for the mic. Okay, you're on.
I was looking at documents, so, no, no questions.
Yep, all right. Ari, anything?
None as of yet.
Okay, well, we're going to, we're going to be voting on it soon. So if you do have anything.
I'm good, yeah.
Speak now, speak now or forever hold your peace, I guess. But this is a whole different dimension and location. And go ahead, Scott.
Yeah, just to give the other members of the board a little background here, Tony and I have talked about this property a lot. And he took a look at it and raised the question about the tree in the back at one point. That sort of piqued the applicant's interest in what it would take to remove the tree. You know, initially thinking that that was a, going to be a very expensive endeavor. He went and got a quote from a tree guy and was pleasantly surprised to find out how inexpensive it is. Richard and I met at the property and had one of those moments of reflection where we both stood back and said, you know, I wonder, you know, is there a better solution, even though we've gone before the zoning board of appeals and, and got what we were looking for? And came up with a solution that I think at the end of the day will be more fitting for the community. It's a very, very unique site, the way Fitch Street comes down there. And I think it'll open up the opportunity for more off-street parking. Visually, it'll make for a more pleasing solution. And we hope that the board sees what we see in this request.
Well, it just, it continues to amaze me that the address is 7 Burnett Street and not Dunn Street, when you have a front door and a front porch looking out on Dunn Street. But whatever, that's what they decided to make the address. And, and it is 7 Burnett Street. So, all right, at this point, I'd like a motion. I'm going to read it since it is a three-pronged. Actually, it's a four-pronged variance because the lot coverage exceeds the 40%. That's maximum that's allowable in the zoning. It's going to be around 47% lot coverage. So this is a four-pronged motion. I'll make the motion and someone could second it since I'll be reading it. Motion to approve area setback, area variance for setbacks. A front yard setback from 15 feet required to 4 feet. A side yard setback from 15 feet required to 6 feet. A side yard setback from 25 feet required to 17 feet. And a lot coverage variance to increase the maximum lot coverage from maximum 40% to 47%. Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Thank you. All right, all in favor, say. Any opposed? Okay, 4-0 approved. We got through it. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Good luck with your construction.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right.
Tony?
Yes?
Appears we have a caller on the line also.
Oh, someone wants to comment on this variance?
They're, they're on the line. Caller, do you have any comment on this variance?
No comment.
Yeah, sorry. Sorry, I didn't ask for that. I didn't see any, anything on here, any squares, so I didn't ask, but I should have.
Caller, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Well, I didn't think they had a comment.
All right.
They didn't have a comment, so we don't need, we don't. I just dropped my. Get organized here. Okay, the second and last agenda item is a review and comment on the prepared full environmental assessment form and final open space plan as referred by the Kingston Common Council. Essentially, this is a housecleaning chore of. The open space plan is rather telling. I don't know how familiar board members are with the open space plan, but it was adopted in July 2019. And it's a plan that identifies the areas left in the city of Kingston for natural open space. Was, I browsed through it, it was a little alarming. I didn't realize there's only 7% total land devoted to protection, open space within the city of Kingston. 7% is not a very large number of acreage, but I guess it's probably attributable to the history of Kingston. And it basically takes an inventory of sustainable land use and natural resources protection and has a nice open space vision map where it identifies areas to be further developed and protected, including the Hudson uplands, which is the scenic Hudson purchase along the Hudson River and the trail. And the Rondell uplands, parks, trails, street quarters, corridors. So it is very interesting and it is an important plan. The common council wants to make it part of the comprehensive plan. But as such, it needs to go through SEACR, the environmental review. So this board is an interested party in the environmental review process. And essentially, we need, I know, I'll put it in a motion. It's a housekeeping, basically, procedure. We need to waive further notice of additional comments. We consent to the common council as lead agency. And we have no issues with the negative declaration found within the environmental review. I'll open it up for discussion. The common council passed the revolution, resolution making it the, making the common council the lead agency on February 5, 2020. And now the various boards need to review it. And as I said, put those three, three components into a resolution.
So, Tony, is, is this the first time we're seeing this? Because I don't recall ever seeing it.
Me, me personally, I'm familiar with.
First time that the board is seeing this document?
It is.
All right. So I, I'm assuming we're going to have some time to review it?
If we want to table it, we'd have to table it.
Well, I haven't had a chance to look at it.
Okay.
I would be, I would be being asked to vote on something I've never seen.
Well, okay, so I mean, in terms of what you'd never, rather, you'd look at. In terms of the next declaration? Is that where you come?
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm sure it's fine. I just, I just didn't, I didn't have, I didn't have the time to review this document before this meeting. Has anybody read this document?
Yeah, I've read it, but let me, this, this is not a proj, this is not a project per se.
I know, I know it's not. I, I know what it is.
All right.
I understand what it is.
I think Dan wants you, you're on mute, Dan.
And you gotta unmute yourself. Okay, go ahead, Dan.
Yes, so generally what we do is we forward the request for lead agency status along with the document at issue as soon as possible to the board so that there is enough time to look at it and to comment if you, if you believe there is any relevance to the powers of the ZVA. The primary issue for tonight is whether or not this board has any objection to the common council being, declaring itself lead agency. I assume nobody has an objection to that. So in terms of actual comments on the Part 1, Part 2, and Part 3, this board can either vote this evening to state that, given the type of action it is and the authority of the ZVA, by its very nature, it doesn't impact you and therefore you're declining to make comments. Or you can put it over to next month to decide whether there are any substantive issues that you wish to address. You do have, a recollection is 45 days from last Tuesday to actually make those comments. And if you wish to take another month to make that decision, you certainly can do it. Just because of the overlap in meeting schedules, we try to get it to you as soon as possible.
I think I'm sure Brian would feel more comfortable tabling it, Brian? So you had an opportunity to get it?
If, so I don't have an issue, I don't have an issue with the, with who's going to be lead agency on the, on the review. I'm assuming that any member of the public can come on, comment on this as it goes through the common council's review. Is that correct, Dan?
Absolutely. And the secret determination with regard to environmental significance is different than whether or not the council is actually going to adopt it and make it part of the comprehensive plan. The secret is, yeah, it's, it's the first step. And every step that the council addresses this, there certainly is the opportunity for public comment.
But they, they, they so far have, they so far, they've decided that it's a, there's an, it's a, it's a negative declaration on?
No, they, all they have done is request to be declared lead agency. If you consent to the lead agency determination and you waive the additional time you have to comment at the next meeting of laws and rules, which is next week, they can start substantively addressing the Part 1, Part 2, and Part 3 to determine whether or not they believe it should be a positive or negative declaration. But I mean. They can start that until the, the involved agencies, including you, have your opportunity, they can formally start that until you have responded. But you can take the full 45 days and you could hold up the process in laws and rules. Or you can basically communicate with them that you've received it. You know, you waive your opportunity to submit comments with regard to its substance and that in essence, you have confidence that the council will do their job as lead agency and ask appropriate questions with regard to the documents that were submitted from the vote. Makes sense?
Well, except for one thing, Dan, the paperwork that I saw on the SEACR had a lot of no's on there. I'm taking it as a negative declaration that was filled out. And there are a lot of no's on the Part 1 and Part 2 in the document we received.
Well, the council still has to review that document and determine whether or not they agree with the answers that are in the draft. That's the problem.
Someone has filled this out and is recommending a negative declaration to the council.
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear on that because I thought I was seeing something. But because I made the statement about the no issues with the negative declaration, I meant that document that we received and we reviewed had no's on everything in terms of the SEACR criteria, including the zoning board section. There were maybe four items on the zoning board section that were answered in the negative. You want more time to review this, Brian? I mean, I'm, I'm fine with.
I'm, I'm fine, and I'm failing to understand at this point. It doesn't appear as if the ZVA, there's any relevancy to this other than we were part of a list of involved, you know, boards and.
There is.
That were asked.
Yeah, there is a section of the SEACR entitled, "The Planning and Zoning Actions." And the questions have been answered in this form that the person has filled out. I can read you the questions, but I think didn't everybody get this packet, Eric? This SEACR report?
And Tony, I believe it would be helpful if you went through those four questions because I think they demonstrate the limited impact that it has on this board and your jurisdiction. As an appellate board, you address requests for variances and you request appeals. What the underlying comprehensive plan is and what the open space plan is, is something that is really outside your purview because you are charged with enforcing whatever they adopt.
Okay, this is, the title is Part 1, Project and Setting, The Full Environmental Assessment Form. Part 1. C is the Planning and Zoning Actions. First question is, will administrative or legislative adoption or amendment of a plan, local law, ordinance, rule, or regulation be the only approvals which must be granted to enable the proposed action to proceed? Person filling this form out said yes. So if it's yes, you have to then complete sections C, F, and G, which basically is a certification and if you have any additional information. Continuing with the questions, adopted land use plans. Do any municipally adopted city, town, village, or county comprehensive land use plans include the site where the proposed action would be located? And the answer to that is yes. If yes, does the comprehensive plan include specific recommendations for the site where the proposed action would be located? That is a yes, the comprehensive plan does include that. B, is the site of the proposed action within any local or regional special planning district? For example, Greenway, Brownfield, designated state or federal heritage area, watershed management plan or other? The answer to that is yes. And the person filling this out listed Hudson River Port BOA, New York State Heritage Area Program, New York State Certified Local Government Program, Historic Resources LWRP. I don't know what that stands for. I should know, but I don't.
Local River Development Plan.
Water Development, yep. Hudson River Valley, Greenway, Hudson River Valley National Heritage, New York State Climate Smart Communities Program, Title Rondell Creek Watershed Management Plan, Rondell Harbor Management Plan. Those were the, the act, proposed action was within those areas. C, is the proposed action located wholly or partially within an area listed in an adopted municipal open space plan? Answer is no to that. I'm assuming because it is not in, is it proposed action locally or? I don't know why the answer is that, other than maybe the municipal open space plan hasn't been adopted? Dan, I don't know. Yeah, that's the answer. Okay. The next question. Is the site of the proposed action located in a municipality with an adapted zoning law or ordinance? If yes, what is the zoning classifications, including any applicable overlay district? Yes. If yes, what is the zoning classification? It says not applicable. Is the permitted, is the use permitted or allowed by a special or conditional use permit? That wasn't answered. Yes or no, it wasn't answered. Is the zoning change requested as part of the proposed action? No. What school district is the project site located? Kingston School District. What police or other public protection forces serve the project, project site? City of Kingston Police. Which fire protection emergency medical services serve the project site? City of Kingston Fire Department. What parks serve the project site? Kingston City Parks. That's the section C that had to be answered for the planning and zoning. Now, there are many other questions regarding environmental, but it's not applicable to the zoning in terms of this SEACR report. Okay? So what's the pleasure? This is a plan. It's not an action. It's not an approval for trails or approval for sites and campgrounds or whatever else. This is the planned, open space plan. Identifies the open space in the 7% of Kingston. It's still open and should be protected. And it shows a map. still open and should be protected, and it shows a map of the various areas. Now, eventually, because this is gonna have legislation, they have it in this comprehensive, including the comprehensive plan, it needs the environmental requirement of the Seeker. So we're really trying to put like a round peg in a square hole of a Seeker for an open space plan. What's the pleasure of the board? We have an obligation, because we're an interested party or party, that we need to pass a resolution consenting to the common council's lead agency, no issues with negative declaration, waives further notice of additional comments. Do you want to hold off on that? Brian, you raised the question, you're...
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not thinking at this point that it makes sense, you know, because to hold this up at this point, it seems to me like, like if, if somebody has a comment on it beyond the specific scope, if any, that this board has, you know, they can, they can participate with that through the, through the common council. So it just, this seems no, it seems to me at this point to be no reason not to move this along.
Okay, I agree. I think there's gonna be plenty of opportunities to speak on it, and again, keeping in mind, it's not a plan, or it's not a, it's a plan, so I don't know the...
It's a project, it's a plan.
Right, yeah. Ari, anything?
No, I mean, it would be nice to review at some point in time, but I think...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Here it included, included the Seeker in all the packets, right, Eric? It's there. The plan itself is on the city webpage. You need to go to the city webpage and open it. That's where I read, had some involvement with it on some of the committees I've been on, advising the zoning, the members on it, involved in the open space plan. First personal involvement, right behind my house, are blue posted signs for scenic Hudson. So that's gonna be affecting back there for me, to a park eventually, they say. But Dan, the three items I mentioned, waives further notice, the zoning board hereby waives further notice of additional comments, consents to the common council as lead agency, and has no issues with the negative declaration, are they the three criteria needing to be in the resolution?
Yes, and that basically takes you out of it at this point, and allows, from your perspective, the common council to move forward, to deliberate with regard to the secret determination. They are still waiting for Ulster County planning, and Ulster County planning may not get their responses back prior to the laws and rules meeting, in which case, they're gonna have to put it over anyway. But from my perspective, again, you're an appellate body that is charged with enforcing whatever the code says, so I don't see how any of it really is relevant to your jurisdiction or your issues.
Other than those questions I read that is put into every Seeker, you know, we haven't, we haven't dealt with this before, so even though we're in it, I don't know why we haven't dealt with it before, but that's okay, we don't need to deal with it. But in this case, it was brought to the attention of us, and we have to act on it legally. Now, does this have to be typed up as a formal, because I saw the others, that the planning board was kind of like a formal resolution, put on a formal form where the members had a sign, under the circumstances of the coronavirus, is that kind of waived, or what are we gonna do on that?
My position is if you adopt it at this meeting through an oral vote, that certainly that is binding, and then a letter can be prepared that basically states that you have no objection to lead agency status, and, you know, that you have no comment, and that letter can be signed by Tony as the chair of the board. That can be forwarded to laws and rules, and that certainly is sufficient, given that this meeting is being recorded and is of record.
Okay, so at this point, I am moving, and I'll read it again.
Hold on one second, Tony. We have a caller on the line. Do they have any comment on this issue?
Okay.
I don't know if we're gonna ask for any kind of public discussion. Caller, do you have any input? Do you want to speak or not?
No comment.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, Eric. Okay, a motion to approve, the, a motion to approve the resolution stating the zoning board of appeals hereby waives further notice of additional comments regarding the open space plan, consents to the common council as lead agency for the open space plan, and the ZBA has no issues with the negative declaration of the Seeker form. Do I have a second on that?
One second.
Tony?
Yes, Scott.
Why are we commenting on the neg-dec thing? It's, they just, they're recommending it for negative declaration, but do we have, does that have to be part of this?
It was my understanding, yes, Dan.
But you don't have to comment one way or another. You can waive the opportunity to comment further, you can say that you have no objection or no concern, any way you want to do it. I mean, the bottom line again is that, in certain ways, it doesn't impact you, this board.
Okay.
Basically, we're saying has no issues with the negative declaration in that section that I read.
Yes, it's no objection, basically. It's not saying you agree with it, it's saying you have no objection, and you're gonna let them do their work.
All right, instead of issues, I'm gonna write in here, correct that, no objections.
Okay.
All right, okay, all in favor, say hi.
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 What? Was there a no? Okay, 4-0 passed. Well, thank you for everybody tuning in. I don't know when we're gonna get back to normalcy in our meetings, but I had a little, you know, these virtual meetings are wonderful, except I had a little scare this afternoon at around 2:30. My internet, I went on my computer and my internet went out, and I called Spectrum, and I said, what's going on with the internet? Well, we're gonna have it up and running in two hours, so I was ready to go down and simple, Eric, but...
There you go.
This is the problem with the tele, tele netizen and tele meetings, tele instruction, depending on as well as your internet.
Yeah.
But thank you, everybody tuning in, and thank you, Eric. I'll bring, I'll bring the phone down tomorrow with my... Mary, it's all right, Eric?
Hey, guys, have a good one.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, everybody. Thank you again.
Bye.
I'll bring this down tomorrow, Eric. I can't hear you, your mic...
Okay, Tony, sounds good. I'll see you in the morning.
I'll see you in the morning. Over and out.
Over and out.
We...